We are all set.
Thank you, Catherine. I'm John Gregg, the mayor of the town of Seabrook Island, and we are convening the town council today for the February 2023 work session. As you will, we will be following the agenda. And from the agenda, the first items on the agenda are my items. First of those, we have an update from a discussion with NUSC concerning donation match proposal. Councilman Fox and I engaged in a discussion on one February with representatives of NUSC concerning our inquiry about the potential for NUSC support for the town matching contributions of residents for the proposed medical facility. Members had been provided materials for the so-called crowdfunding prepared by NUSC and shared with us during that discussion. NUSC contemplates establishing a webpage that would allow online donations and would show progress toward a predetermined goal determined by the town's matching commitment. They also suggested a turtle wall, so-called turtle wall, and we that would be at the facility for donor recognition. They emphasized their experience that a relatively short window for donations, for example, thirty days helps drive donations. So, as I said, members of council have been provided the materials we we received from NUSC. We've been having discussions on and off about the town potentially making a donation to NUSC for the proposed facility, and this was an inquiry to them. And you have the result of the discussion that we had.
Mr. Mayor, can I comment on something there?
Yes, you certainly can.
You know, this is ongoing discussion and a potential donation. And NUSC did this mock-up of what a webpage or a pamphlet might look like. I don't think it should have been attached to the agenda like this. Because people, the first thing they do, they scroll the agenda, and it looks like we, the town, has committed $100,000. And we only put a placeholder in the budget. And I wish we would have just brought the mock-up, called it a mock-up, brought it up on the screen and looked at it, but attaching it to the agenda now out there to the whole community is matched to $100,000 donation from the town. We haven't made that donation. So I just want to put that on record when the town's eclipse go out and then he's watching that we have a placeholder in the budget that we have not voted to make that donation.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? There are none. The other other item that I have on the agenda is an update concerning the town's request for public assistance in respect of Hurricane Ian. As of two February, the status of the town's request for public assistance in response to Hurricane Ian was shown as obligated, meaning the FEMA's review of the town's request has resulted in approval for grant funding. FEMA share is seventy-five percent of the approved amount, and the state of South Carolina share is twenty-five percent of the approved amount. At this point, I do not know that the state has committed to funding. Whether or not the state will fund its share is still unclear to me at this point. The state is responsible for preparing a so-called funding agreement, which is required before any funds can be dispersed. We are awaiting availability of the funding agreement from the state. Any questions or comments in that regard? There are none. We will now proceed to members of council. And first, I'll call on Councilwoman Finke for her comments.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jared. Next, I will call on Councilwoman Fox for her comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be as quick as possible. There was a radio net practice on Sunday, January sixteenth at eight p.m. This month, Seabrooker came out with a wonderful article from Councilwoman Jerry Finke concerning revising the VTRs. We've had eight items and headlines. And moving on to my community promotion and engagement committee, just want to remind everyone who may be listening in that the 2023 Community Promotion Grant Program is opened, and we opened it on February first, and we are looking for grant applications. The first review of these applications is going to take place on March sixteenth. The deadline to be considered during that first review will be March ninth. Total funds available are $7,500, and minimum grant $250,000, maximum grant $1,500. The other event that's coming up quickly would be the, we have a shredding event in the spring. It will be Friday, April fourteenth, so people can be getting together all their materials that they would like to have shredded. Our next Community Promotion Engagement Committee meeting will be on March sixteenth at one p.m. We are skipping our February meeting. And that is my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fox. Any questions from that? None, very none. Next up, I will call on Barry Goldstein for his comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I provided everybody, I think it's attached to our agenda, the thought estimate on the architect for the proposed town hall annex and garage and redoing the parking area and a public space out front. If you look at it, it is a preliminary thought estimate. We had, Joe and I had gone through this with the architect. There are a few changes we're looking at making. Some of the changes off the top of my head are, there's some renovations, the town hall, specifically this one here, we built a new town hall annex that we probably defer until later, since we don't have a need for this one right away. And so we probably reallocate some of that money to other things, some of the things that the architect didn't pick up in his cost estimate on the garage, or like a generator, which we think a second standard room generator from a health point in case of emergency situations. Anyways, to summarize, the garage itself, we're looking at about 1.1 million. The site work, which could include redoing most of the parking out front, installing a new public space between the town hall annex and the garage, which should be later used, like the food court area, we're looking at around 325,000. And then the town hall annex, we're looking at about 1.7. That all comes up for a little over $3.1 million. You throw a contingency somewhere between ten and fifteen percent, the whole budget for the entire package comes up around $3.5 million. It is a lot, but I think the town's needs are there. And again, as I said before, if you do, you can choose to do one or the other if you don't want to fund them both. But in my opinion, doing the whole package is probably more cost-effective and fulfills the needs of the town for long term. As for how we get to 3.5 million, Joe and I've had some discussions. Joe will explain how the town can actually pay for the 3.5 million out of pocket due to, and Joe will explain, due to some unanticipated surplus cash that came in from the ATAX and from taxing this year. We have looked at also using some of the ATAX because it will be a public space out there, and Joe will explain that. So it's my opinion that we should proceed with it. Right now, the architect's moving ahead, so it is important that we decide whether we're going to fully fund this or we're going to decide to do something else so that we can finish off the design and hopefully go out and bid in the spring. So that's really what I have, and I said I'll leave it up to Joe to explain how we get the money and how it doesn't affect next year's budget at all. It's really coming from what we already allocated, what we unanticipated we got in this year. That's all I have. And maybe Joe wants to do it now?
I'm ready to do it now if you're ready. Please do, Joe. I'm just interested to know.
So what we looked at were, what options do we have available at our disposal currently? Of course, we always have the ability to go out for other funding options, bonds, things of that nature. But looking at our cash reserves, we historically budget very conservatively. We have very sizable cash reserves. And then, as Barry said, we've also had some unexpected or surplus funds from prior years as well. So what we looked at was, and Barry threw out the number, about three and a half million dollars. That's really just a coincidence, when you add all these up, it comes out to about three and a half million dollars. What I was trying to do is look at what funds are available that we could pull without necessarily pulling from another source that's already been budgeted or designated for some other purpose. So to start with, we have in our town facilities fund, our estimated fund balance at the end of last year will be $396,500. So that's money that the council over the last couple of years would start tucking away. If you remember, we call those designated funds. You start putting money aside for future capital projects. So as of the end of last year, we have $396,500. And this year's budget, this year 2023 budget, knowing that we were pursuing these projects, council voted to also appropriate $1,050,000 from just our unrestricted general fund balance into that designated fund for capital projects. So that would be added to the 1.396. So that's basically right now cash on hand, a little over 1.4 million in our town facilities fund. Now, we do have a couple outstanding items, so obviously we're paying our architect to design the facility. We have contracts for that. And then there's also the ability for us to add on some interior and, you know, look at our cabinets and finishes and different things like that. So when we factor those costs in, we basically have just a little under 1.4 basically on hand available to spend towards that project. If you wanted to do the garage and the stuff and do nothing more, you basically would have about enough set aside in the fund currently to do the garage, do the site work, but you couldn't address any of the issues at town hall. So we continued on looking in our general fund. We actually, we won't have a firm number until the audit's complete in a couple months. But as of right now, if you remember when Catherine went through the financial reports in January, those were our year-end December financial reports. The final number may go up or down a little bit as we get the last couple of checks and pay out the last couple items. But we should finish last year with the general fund fund balance, so a surplus of about $800,000. Historically, what the town has done is we just sit on that in the general fund, and then we adopt the budget for the next year. You would take those and parcel them out to the different designated funds. If you wanted to, that money will be there. Like I said, about $800,000. Only drawback for that would be, I know over the last several years, we've been putting, you know, $100,000 into emergency fund and, you know, funding different things with the surplus funds, because those are non-recurring funds. So you'd want to dedicate it towards non-recurring capital emergency-type projects. But like I said, as of right now, there's about $800,000 that we expect to have as of year-end last year. You could use all of that towards this project if you wanted to. It's there, it's available, and wouldn't have any impact on operational expenses in future budget years. And we would also stay within our targeted fund balance policy of fifty to 100% of our prior year's general fund budget. So you can use it if you want to. Ultimately, that's a decision for council. With the American Recovery Act that was passed a couple of years ago by Congress, the town in two separate payments, we've received, I want to say it was around $930,000. A small portion of that was used in prior budget year for the COVID pay for individuals who worked during the pandemic. But we still have cash on hand currently, $914,915. So the way the rules are set up for that money, basically you can take, they call it essentially the standard deduction, so you could do up to $100 million and basically spend it without federal strings attached. And there's still recording requirements and everything else. But you basically have discretion as to how those funds are used. So if you wanted to allocate all or a portion of those to this project, you have over $900,000 there available for it. Because those are, I know, one-time non-recurring funds, I would highly suggest using it for a capital project. To me, this seemed like a good fit. But if you had other projects you wanted to pursue this funding, you have pretty, pretty wide discretion with how you use it. So when we take all of those together, our town facilities fund, the surplus from last year's budget, and the ARPA funds that right now are just sitting in that account, we have about $3.1 million. So just based on our early preliminary estimates, if you said, okay, we want to move forward, there's basically enough there today to do everything. Now Barry said, I think wisely, you want to have a contingency in place because there's going to be things that come up. The bids may come in a little bit higher, things like that. So we also looked at some of our restricted funds. And although it's basically two, we have our state accommodations tax and the new town accommodations tax, which was adopted last fall, started in January first of this year. The difference between the ATAX and those other unrestricted revenues is you have to use them for some tourism-related expenditure. So when we looked at the budget for this, particularly at the site work, that plaza area on the side of town hall, you know, first phase of a future park or whatever we were looking at, that to me is kind of low-hanging fruit for being an accommodations tax eligible expenditure. So this year, or at the end of last year, we had 400, a little over 451,000 in our fund balance. This year, council when approving the budget, you did budget to spend that down a bit. If you remember, we put $200,000 in for some amenities and improvements to the pathway. So when we spend that, in total, we'll spend more than we take in, so we're going to deplete that fund balance by about $175,000 based on what's budgeted currently. So if you subtract that from the amount that we had available at the year-end last year, we should have about $276,000 in our state A-Tax Fund. And then with the town A-Tax Fund going into place in January of this year, we budgeted revenue of $180,000. We put in, I believe it was $40,000 for beach patrol. So there's another $140,000 that's there that's just unallocated. Assuming you don't use it for anything, it'll just roll into that fund balance at the end of the year. So you have $140,000, $250,000 on the town A-Tax that's unallocated. So when you take the two A-Tax Funds combined, $416,543. So I think definitely the site work, the plaza area, the landscaping enhancements, things like that, those to me are legitimate A-Tax expenses because the reason why we're doing a lot of that is to have a facility where we can host our events and activities here at the town hall site, you know, with more parking and better layout and, you know, not having people sitting on hot asphalt when it's 95 degrees out. So when we take all of those together, we're looking at, in the ballpark, at a little over $3.5 million. So if you decided you wanted to move forward with the project, based on the preliminary estimates that we've received, you know, through multiple sources, if council was willing to move forward with all of these, that the amounts we're showing on here, we basically have the amount to do the entire project without, you know, going into our general operating funds, without, you know, pulling from other designated funds. You know, we wouldn't be pulling $500,000 on the emergency fund or anything like that. Basically, the the funding's there, either dedicated fully, partially, or available. And like I said, the only impact would be in next year's budget, if you decided to commit surplus from last year, then, you know, you would either have no or less funds than we would normally have to parcel out to some of those other designated funds. But you wouldn't have to go for a bond or have any carrying costs, no taxes or anything would be used towards the project. But ultimately, that would be a decision that council would have to make. If you weren't comfortable using these options or using them at the levels that are available, we'd either have to look at alternate sources or scaling back or pushing off or not doing part of the project. So like Barry said, I agree with it. If you're going to do it, it makes more sense just to do it all at once, tear it up, put it back together and move on. But if you weren't comfortable with tapping into some of these sources or wanting to use them for other projects, then we'd have to go back to the architect and probably scale back the project or, you know, do it over a longer period of time in multiple phases. But I did just want to give this to you to say, we're not coming in with pie in the sky, you know, designing a $10 million town hall, having only $3 million to pay for it. You know, we, we can comfortably, I feel, get to that amount with the existing sources that we have without having to tap into other sources or going out and taking on debt or anything like that. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Joe and or Barry?
Anything, I just, and I think you answered it, for example, the emergency funds that we have, that's still going to be there, that's not touched. How about other capital, like for example, we've been setting aside money for roads?
What's there stays there. We're not taking anything out from the money that's already been set aside for the road project. The only impact would be, you know, over the last several years, we've been putting money in from prior year surpluses. If you used all of last year's surplus, then when we did the budget for next year, you know, you wouldn't have a couple hundred thousand dollars to put into it next year. So that's really the only drawback, is looking ahead at future years, having less money available.
Yeah, but after a year or so, once that's paid for, then it goes back to be the way it was.
Right.
So you're only taking whatever is to pay this out. So you're taking a year holiday at the most, a two-year holiday or something like that. The ARPA funds, is there any deadline of that yet? Has anything said you got to spend this by such a date?
Twenty twenty-six?
So whatever we have to do, we have to decide before 2026.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if we were looking at, you know, a road project and you wanted to use that money towards it, you have to go through all the design, all the permitting, everything. Even if we said, okay, let's move forward with this project, which, you know, we don't even have a shovel-ready project. We'd have to finish all the designs, go through all the permitting, construct. I don't even know that we could spend that money by 2026 on a road project, just with how long road projects typically take. But yeah, I mean, you could use that money if you wanted to buy vehicles, hire staff. I mean, you have pretty broad expression with it.
If we're tight on a, on a deadline to spend by, because you're going to be spending this money out over a period of time, because construction doesn't take, especially something like this, right, in a year and a half, two years.
Yes, if we move forward this year and give the go-ahead, go through the bid process, sign the contract, I have no reason to believe we wouldn't be completed. And, and what we would likely do is, all the first checks that we issue, we'd say, okay, here's the ARPA money, that's what we're going to spend first, if it came down to it. But I mean, I wouldn't see a project like that going, going beyond that. You know, unless they came in and said, okay, here's your lowest bid, and it's $5 million. You know, then we'd have to go back and revisit it and make some changes or whatever, you know, then it could potentially be extended a little bit longer. But I think our numbers are pretty reasonable, you know, especially with the garage, because that's for the most part just a shell. You know, you have a bathroom, a small office space, those type things. You know, I, I think Mike, our architect, is, and he's coordinated with the builder, so, you know, he's, he's comfortable with his numbers, but they may go up a little bit, down a little bit as we, you know, refine and tweak the design. But, you know, just from a preliminary standpoint, I think they're certainly reasonable numbers.
Joe, on the A-Tax that almost half a million dollars, and we're assuming that we can use the money for this, does anybody have to approve that?
We have, the state A-Tax would have to go through the A-Tax Advisory Committee.
Okay.
And you'd have to get a recommendation. And then that recommendation would come to council. They just have to recommend, they don't have
Right.
Final approval authority. Now, there is state oversight.
And that's kind of our question.
Tourism expenditure review committee. But as long as you can document and show that you're using it for a tourism-related purpose, you know, then we could fine. I wouldn't say, let's use that money to put solar panels on the garage, because that's not really a tourism-related purpose. But, you know, the, the site improvements, the parking, the plaza area, and, you know, we could probably even go in, get into the first square footage cost, and, you know, we, this year, we're funding half of our new communication and event staff person will come out of A-Tax, because they'll be engaged in promotion activities for the town. So, you know, we could probably take some proportion of their office space and, you know, take some of that and charge it to A-Tax too. But yeah, there, there is a process we'd have to go through for, for state A-Tax.
Can I ask you a couple of questions that, these are probably more for Barry, as I'm looking at these estimates that came like, like a future elevator? I mean, would that be something that if costs are coming in right, you would just do it?
Yeah, that's for the garage, I think, the future elevator. It's a D-Duck. We're not really putting it in there. He's just going to put a shaft in.
Okay.
He's putting a shaft in, so in the future, if somebody decides they want to use, so the upstairs of the garage is going to be unfinished, but we're going to drywall it, so it's ready for future expansion.
And a shaft.
And, and a shaft's going to go in, so that in case they have to put the elevator in in the future to make handicap accessible, it's ready to go.
Okay, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but we're designing and building this garage, so at some point, we can go all electric vehicles, equipment, and there'll be the capacity to charge everything.
Right, so the design right now has Brooklyn Electric's power charging stations will be included in our design. The garage will be powered up to have, be able to charge everything they want.
Okay.
Right now, we anticipate putting solar panels on there. Again, you know, if, if our budget comes in, everything works out, that's what we want to do, you know, that would be one of those items in. If the budget comes close, we can start looking at things we want to cut. But, so yes, the, the building will be prepared for charging whatever you want in the future. It will be interior, the 220 will be there for everything.
Okay. These estimates for the square footage, is that the finishing too, like carpet? I mean, the turnkey finish, like carpet and flooring and cabinets?
Yeah, so
The estimate?
In the garage, there's not a lot, like just, not a lot of finishes. But in here, it includes all the finishes for the new section of the building.
Okay.
Like I said, the one variance on the estimate is the existing town hall renovations. If you see, it's, it's 1,075 square feet, 250 square foot. So it came out to be $268,000. That was the architect saying, oh, we're going to redo this entire room here, put in, put in new office space, new electrical, new everything in here. We're going to put carpet out there, do everything. After Joe and I talked about it, it was like, well, we don't, this will be the one space we don't need when we have a new building. After Joe and I talked about it, it was like, well, we don't, this will be the one space we don't need when we have a new building. So maybe we should just wait to see what the future needs are, whether it's gonna be. Office space or a planning department that may not want fifteen different offices, so. Right, so then we thought that money could be spent someplace else. If we took that money, we allocated to, again, we didn't have a generator in the garage, and we thought, well, put a generator in the garage, that there's two. Uh, two generators supporting each structure, so, that, and again, we took some of some of that, and we said, well, maybe we'll use that as. As contingencies, so then if in case we decide we have something else to do and the design keeps going, or we'll have it available.
And we didn't cut it entirely, we kept some in, because we didn't wanna.
Yeah, fifty thousand, put new carpet in and new stuff here, but we're just not gonna redo this room.
So what about, like, furniture for the new council chambers and the dais? Is that? Building the dais is part of it and?
It's not in the construction cost, that would be, uh, money cost to be added.
Okay, and so if we had to, using the money for in here, we could maybe use.
Yeah, so so furniture is not really a hard construction cost, so at some point, you have to sit down and go, there's gonna be six new offices. Do you, you know, you get to buy desks and stuff, and same with the chairs, you can take these chairs and put them over there, but. Council, council may decide these aren't nice enough, you wanna get new chairs, definitely a new.
Yeah.
Diaz, and and obviously, there's gonna be one screen right behind, and that hasn't been part of it, so there, there's some additional soft costs that will. Coming in the future, um.
And so you are gonna put in the, you said there's a need for a second standalone generator, so we're gonna. Kind of plan on that's gonna be part of it?
For the group, for the garage, yeah, the existing generator here should be.
Should be fine.
For that, but we we thought the garage should have its own, so in case, case of an emergency, that's where all the. Storage, new storage is gonna be, and we thought, well, that that building should have it just in case somebody needs to run power.
So the generator we have now for town hall could still service the.
That's what we're, we're.
Okay. I think those were my questions for the moment, thank you.
I mean, there's still questions, I mean, we we still have to move forward. I I mean, the design is probably, you know, architecturally, ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the way there, he's. Just getting his mechanical, electrical, plumbing, civil guy, architect, they're just starting to engage, so the details are starting to come out now. Um, so that's where the, we're not really sure, you know, things to go up, things to go down. So he he's starting to do that, but I mean, things are moving fast, I mean, we anticipate, you know, the design being. Done probably early, early spring, and then. Freaking it to go out to bid shortly thereafter, I mean, if we allocate the money, then I think it's Joe's. Going to be ready to go out to bid as soon as he gets it, it's not gonna be like we're gonna think about it.
So one more question, when we do the addition, are we doing like hurricane windows, so we've done, we've got shutters? Okay. Because that's what it has, the one of hurricanes.
Hurricane windows and both both buildings.
And exterior party plank or low maintenance or something, okay, all right, thank you.
Just, uh, in that, uh, maintenance facility. The last three, I see where it says future elevator is in brackets, the twenty-five thousand. The future office expansion and the future lavatory, is that in the? Total cost on the bottom, I didn't.
Yeah, it adds up, so the office expansion, what that is basically, it's the upstairs.
Yeah, right.
We're gonna drywall it out, let's finish it now.
Oh, okay.
Future, somebody gets in there, it's already in a condition.
It's not a future item.
No.
Per se, it's it's the. For future.
Yeah, that's an add-in, and we're, you know, you know, if nickels and dimes come important, then you say, well, maybe you don't need to drywall it out now, but. We would anticipate, let's do it now, so that a few years from now, somebody says, well, we need two more office spaces. It's all set to go up there, you can just wall in whatever you want, but it's already drywalled.
You know, it'd be conditioned space.
Yes, that's like the elevator, we don't really ever anticipate putting an elevator in a garage, but if you're gonna use it as office space, you. You may have to be ADA's and require us to have accessible area up there, so we'll put the shaft in, we'll leave it.
Are we doing a big enough expansion of town hall that we have, we've got an elevator for going up the stairs here? Because we don't really don't have.
At this point, if we expand town hall, upstairs is gonna go back into storage, it's not gonna be office space. So storage, I don't think requires an ADA requirement to get up there, so we're just gonna.
Right, right now, out of necessity, we're using it as two offices. Yeah, um, you know, technically, this building should have an elevator.
It should.
You're using it and providing access and, you know, using that. Um, you know, we, we don't have an elevator.
Do you bet, is that still, doesn't matter, that stairwell, I'm not even sure it's a code, it's so stupid, but, um, anyway. I'll stop, thank you, for your answers.
So ultimately, we're we're not necessarily asking for any decision today, or even at the next meeting, because, you know, we have to put together a. Budget amendment, get our final costs, and, you know, have all those estimates ready. Um, the biggest thing I think we were hoping to accomplish today is, you know, if you think this funding plan is reasonable. Then we'll proceed with the architect and finalize the designs, and basically get to a point where we have a full package that's ready to go. Um, if council has concerns about using these funding options that we've identified. Then we would either have to scale the project back or find some other funding source to kind of do it as it's. Designed currently, so we wanted to throw that out for discussion and just kind of see where council is on. Uh, on this as a, as a potential funding plan.
Any questions about the funding plan?
One que- one question about the arbo money, is this, um, at one point, who? Goes back a long ways, um, I know we have discussed possibly the utility commission using some of this money, has. Have they found additional monies, have they gotten a grant, et cetera, um?
They've, my understanding is they've applied for grant funding, but they haven't gotten a notice of award or non-award yet, it's still pending.
I find it very reasonable. Your funding plan, and 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 as of this moment, I don't have any concerns about it, unless something pops in my head. Or shower somewhere.
It's clearly a big item, right, I mean, it's a big decision. But, again, if you look at the staffing that's going on here, we have people doubled up in rooms, no mayor office, no, no meeting room. Clearly, the town hall is servants' purpose for twenty, it's something on years, and. You know, maybe it's our our opportunity now to expand it for the next twenty-five years, and, I mean, the garage speaks for itself, if you're gonna invest. You know, fifty thousand dollars every vehicle, that's, that's fifty thousand dollars, every vehicle sitting outside in the sun doing depreciating and. And as we keep going and doing, doing more of the. Maintenance, everything ourselves, and we're probably gonna have more.
And I think just today, pulling the landscape and maintenance activities in-house and not contracting now is proving to be a really. Positive, good thing in that, that's, I see in the future, that's where we're gonna wanna keep it. And it needs the garage for that.
If you're gonna spend funds, I mean, it, there's no better place to put it than appreciating.
Yeah.
Appreciating value into something like a building, I mean, you clearly, you're gonna get your. You're paying for something that's gonna last, and appreciating value versus depreciating asset like a road or something, which you have to do, but. You'd like to kick that down the road as far as possible, because it's just something that's just gonna lose value as soon as you put it in there.
Um, just bigger bit piggybacking on what Jerry said, I find it a very reasonable. Um, plan, and surprising that we had this amount of money available for us. To do this, sort of, I guess, guess out of pocket, it's kind of very nice, um, so, I I don't see any problems at all. No, of course. And I always like, if we can move forward off the dime, soon as. Yeah, I'm like, I would love it, too, yes. The timeline of of moving forward with a little haste, and there would be good. Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be, you're okay, I'm okay, Barry, I assume you're okay. Okay, we're okay, Joe.
Thank you.
Uh, Dan, who wants?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, one thing, our, and a monthly meeting for the Public Safety Committee is next Tuesday. And the March meeting will be dedicated to a meeting of the DRC. So that will be March twenty-first, um, we've been in contact with. Um, National Weather Service, which leads me to Joe. Uh, in in the agenda, have you had a meeting with Joe Coats?
I did.
Okay, anything that we should be aware of on the Public Safety Committee? Um, I'm assuming this is just a oral discussion, or? The general discussion about this.
It is, did you want me to cover it now?
Well, that was my question, as I, when I was looking at the agenda and I saw that, I said, okay, what is he gonna say to you? Him and I have spoken about the March meeting and what I would like him to focus about, and maybe it's. Entirely different, so, uh.
Yeah, this, this is a bigger topic about evacuation sounds.
Okay. I'll I'll wait till you finish your report, then, otherwise, I have nothing else.
And Dan? Uh, next up? Yes, Joe, our administrator should be on this.
All right, thank you, um, we have, uh, three items, just as an FYI, that'll be on your agenda for action on. Uh, the next council meeting agenda, two weeks from today, uh, we have. A renewal of our beach patrol contract, um, you recall, the initial contract was for a period of two years, that was twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And then the town had the option to add up to three, uh, additional one-year renewals, so this would be the first of those one-year renewals. Uh, for twenty twenty-three, um, when we were going through the budget process, um. We had, um, discussed, um, uh, doing some additions to the contract to ensure that we would, um. Throughout the entire beach patrol season, have at least two people and two vehicles on the beach. Uh, at all times, and then that would increase during the peak-peak season to four people and two vehicles at all times, um. The initial estimate we had got was about two hundred and forty thousand, and that's the same amount that we have, um, in the, um, contract, so. Essentially, all we're doing is just extending it for an additional one-year term, and then increasing the, um, service level to. Ensure that we have two people, two vehicles, um, at all times. Pretty, but otherwise, all the other language from the contract just carries over, uh, into the one-year renewal. Are any questions or comments about that? Yeah, we did budget the two forty in this year's budget, it's the hidden budget. Uh, the second item we had is a renewal, twenty twenty-three, um, dolphin education program. This is something that we funded, uh, out of the state accommodations tax over the last several years, continuing, uh, into twenty twenty-three. Uh, we budgeted ten thousand dollars, um, for that program, uh, we've submitted a draft, um. Renewal contract to Low Country Marine Mammal Network, which is a local, uh, nonprofit entity, which helps coordinate and. Do all the scheduling and volunteer training, they, uh, also send their staff out for observations and. Uh, other activities as well, so, um, with one exception, this is the same contract we've had the last several years. Uh, we did recommend putting one, um, covering one additional topic in the contract, and. It's something that they're basically already doing, uh, but we felt it would be beneficial just to put it in there, um, so under the. Um, in your packet, on page twenty-five, page three of the contract itself. Um, we added, under the goals of the project, uh, D, reducing instances of marine mammal harassment. Uh, which I think is kind of a given, but it's good just to spell it out in there, um, but E was also adding assisting town code enforcement officers. With the identification of potential violation of the town's beach and wildlife protection ordinance. Uh, that's something they're basically already doing, so if they have someone out there and they observe something happening, someone out there with a dog or something. Where they're not supposed to be, um, you know, more often than not, they're gonna be contacting beach patrol or. A code enforcement officer, just to let them know, hey, there's somebody doing something out here they're not supposed to be doing. Um, and then under the.
Would that include, um, if someone is in a boat in this inlet itself?
It it depends what it is, if they're beaching a boat, yes, that's a violation.
But that, when it says harassment. Uh, marine mammal harassment, a a big part of that is people getting too close. To them in boats.
Yeah, sir, if they're doing it in the inlet, um, they're likely gonna contact. Um, what is it, NOAA, um, or DNR? Um, because they would have enforcement capacity in the inlet itself.
Because that's.
I was, yeah, I was just wondering, yeah, I could see on land, you know, it's like the. You know, dogs and the bees and all those kind of things. But what went, when I read this, what, my mind was, sometimes boaters in the inlet. Ooh, you know, just. Wanting to get closer, oh, look at that, look at that, more, you know, not knowing that they're supposed to maintain a pretty big distance away. Um, if they see this, you know, I I'm sure you talk to them. I don't know if you talk to them about that specific type of instance, in other words. You can very easily just get the number of the boat and report it accordingly to whoever you reported to. And everybody's got a camera on their phone, so you can. Take a picture of the violation and report it otherwise, but I was just wondering if that type of incident was even told about.
Yeah, that particular one, um, is most likely, it's not gonna be a beach violation.
Right.
So we would go, I don't remember if it's DNR, if it goes to the fence, but, um, yeah, I mean, like when Lauren's out there, she has a. Pretty high-powered cameras, so they can take pictures of boat registration numbers and things like that, so. Some that that I'm sure they do if they come across that, but it's not something that our code enforcement would be enforcing, in that, yeah. Um, so as far as their obligations in terms of assisting our code enforcement. Um, we put in a paragraph that says, uh, it's on page twenty-seven of the packet, page five of the agreement. Um, while project team members are not charged with enforcing violations of the town's ordinances. So they're not code enforcement officers, they shouldn't be approaching someone, they don't have the ability to, um, you know, issue a citation or an ordinance summons. Um, we do encourage them, if they observe a violation, to report the violations. To our code enforcement officers, whether it's a member of beach patrol or, um, one of our town code enforcement officers. To investigate and if necessary, initiate enforcement, so specifically, if you see something, we're encouraging them to say something. Like I said, they're pretty much already doing that now, uh, but we just put it in as kind of an expectation that. Um, you know, if they do see something, we're encouraging them to, uh, notify our code enforcement officers, because. You know, it's almost four miles of beach, there's, you know, at most two vehicles out there, they're not gonna be everywhere at once. So any help that they can get to help enforce our ordinances, uh, I think is for their benefit, for our benefit, for the public benefit as well, so.
I think that's one step further.
Yeah.
If they do report, do we somehow protect them from harassment or whatever after the fact? In other words, let's say one of them does report a violation of town rules. And a summons is issued, and a few weeks later. The person who was, uh, again, you know, who was, uh, cited. Or the violation comes up to, hey, you reported me, or whatever, that type of thing would, um. Would we, should we think about protect, just like we would for any. Code enforcement official, in other words, if they're harassed by someone, we would protect them through that. You understand where I'm going with this, in a way?
Yeah, um, I mean, one, you'd have to know who the person was who reported it, it could be anybody who sends a message or calls true. Um, I mean, I've been out there and I've seen stuff, and I send messages to beach patrol. Uh, I mean, if you see a dog out there or something, um, so, I mean, ultimately, we encourage anyone, if they see a violation, to contact beach patrol. Um, you know, we're not asking them to get in your face, we're not.
No, I hear you, yeah.
Confrontational, um, you know, may they. Confrontational, um, you know, may they assume that's the one who reported it? They probably could, um. Is there anything that would prevent someone from getting in their face? Not in our beach ordinance currently, um, but you know, if you're harassing or. Um, assaulting or something, I mean, you have other laws that would apply, general laws of the state.
Okay, I'm just, you know, again, unfortunately, uh. Those types of incidences do happen. I just wanna make sure that if we, if there was anything that we can do to. Help these people out, we did it, that's all.
And, and again, the way it's worded, we're not requiring if they see them to report it, we're simply encouraging if they see it. You know, in a safe way, in a non-confrontational way, um. You know, if you see a dog, you don't have to be standing right in front of them with a camera, you can be halfway down the beach. Take a picture and, you know, beach patrol will know what kind of dog it is, what the individual's wearing. You know, you can do that from a distance, um, somebody may not even know who's reporting it, and it may not even be beach patrol or, um. The dolphin folks who are the ones reporting it. So, but tho- those were the only substantive changes to the, uh, prior year agreements. Um, so we'll have that on for, uh, approval in two weeks. And then the other one, um, Dan and I kind of inadvertently came across. Our emergency preparedness services contract with the E group, um, is actually expired. Um, we've had the ability to do a one-year renewal, um, which we also did late last year. Um, so what we'll be asking, and I've already talked with, um, Scott Cave, who's the contractor, um. And, uh, we'd be asking to approve this contract. For the current year, which would be retroactive to January, uh, July first of last year. Um, what we'd like to do, instead of having this thing ex- expire in the middle of the hurricane season. And I've already talked with Scott about this, is just take it out through the end of February next year, uh, and then if you wanted to go out and do a full big package. We'd be doing it on the off-season, not in the middle of hurricane season, and he, uh, he was amenable to that, so, um, this is just. Adopting a, exercising the renewal retroactive to the July date of last year. But instead of going through the same day, July of this year, going through the end of February. And then we would have a replacement contract for March first of. And next, next year, yeah. So we'll have this on the agenda for approval as well. Any questions about any of those contract items? All right, hearing none, um, if you can pull up that attachment for us then, um. So, we received an invitation a couple of weeks ago to attend a meeting, um. At the Charleston County EOC, they sent it out to, um, representatives of all the beach communities. And what they've been looking at, uh, in consultation with, um. State emergency management is, um, changing the evacuation zones, not just for Charleston County, but. Uh, all up and down the coast. And they have several reasons for, for why they're trying to do what they're doing. They want it to be more risk-based, more efficient, um. And to put more focus on the areas that, uh, have the highest risk, um. But also in instances, you know, if you can maybe delay evacuating, you know, get, get the highest risk. Zones evacuated. And then maybe wait one or two more weather reports before you decide. To evacuate, you know, the next evacuation zone, um. It's also a way to, um, um, without necessarily adversely impacting public safety. But, um, you know, being more, uh, efficient with how you get people. Um, out of those highest danger areas. So what we're looking at right now basically is, um, creating, um. Creating an evacuation zone that would essentially just cover the barrier islands. Um, so it would be Etistow, Seabrook, uh, Kiowa, Folly, Sullivan's. Uh, Isle of Palms and Points North. Um, basically, what, what that would do is, if you can pull up that other document. And I've already started doing this with, um, our neighboring county, um. But it was really interesting when the, the, uh, EMD was going through the information capo. Little quickie thing. It's like almost twenty pages, I'm sure you don't wanna look at all of it, but, um. So like I said, they've already started going through doing it for, uh, neighboring counties, Lori County, Colliton County, um. But what they're looking at, uh, and this is showing the, um, storm surge risk, so when they're talking about having more of a. Risk-based approach, you can see the concentration of the highest risk on the right-hand side. Is by and large near the coast and then some, you know, inland river areas. And they, they did all their modeling and they were talking about how they do all that, they run through like a thousand different scenarios and. You know, try to take the worst one out of the thousand, um, so when you look at the, the coastal area, this is the. Current, uh, evacuation zones, so right now you'll see Seabrook's down over here. Um, if you get a call to evacuate Zone A, you know, you're evacuating Etistow, you're evacuating Seabrook, Kiowa. Um, Folly Beach, but you're also evacuating all of Johnson, all of Wadon Law, West Ashley. Um, you know, if you're doing the same thing up over here in the orange area, Zone C, you know, you're not just evacuating. Sullivan's and Isle of Palms and Deweze Island, you're evacuating all of Mount Pleasant. Um, so by changing the zone, and this was the first draft, that's the updated draft. Um, you could be more precise and more exact with those evacuation zones. So when you call for an evacuation of Zone A. And there's a really interesting chart, oh, they didn't have that one here. Oh no, there it is, um, the way it was drawn from draft one, I haven't done the draft two, they included all of Etistow in draft two, I think that was. The main change, and then they also included, um. Some more of the peninsula and I think Daniel Island, uh, in the yellow, um, Zone B, but. Um, you can see the, the big change from the first draft, and these numbers will change a little bit in the second draft. Um, if an evacuation was ordered for Zone A. And like we said, that includes all this area in red. You'd have, you know, almost a hundred and seventy-five thousand people evacuating at the same time. Whereas based on this new map, kind of with that more targeted Zone A, you would only have, you know, about nineteen thousand people. So you're essentially reducing potentially, um, by ninety, eighty-five, ninety percent. And in terms of what would that mean for our residents? You know, say it's one of those storms that kind of rushes along the coast, um, you know, you could just say we're gonna evacuate Zone A. And instead of a hundred and seventy-five thousand people trying to all leave at the same time, it's only eighteen thousand people trying to leave at the same time. And, you know, you can continue to watch and if it looks like it's gonna push more inland, well then, you know, maybe. Eight hours, twelve hours, a day later or something, then they say, okay, now we're gonna do Zone B, and you can move those folks out. Um, but with this, how it, I, I feel it would benefit us is. You know, one, it would get the people at highest risk out the earliest, um. And it would make it a heck of a lot easier. Trying to get out of harm's way when it's only, you know, maybe twenty thousand people leaving at the same time, instead of a hundred and seventy-five thousand people leaving. So in terms of how you evacuate, you know, again, if you're only evacuating twenty thousand people and it's, you know, along the essential. Essentially, the entire coastline of Charleston County, you know, you don't have to reverse I twenty-six at that point. To move those twenty thousand people out, you have a little bit more flexibility at where you go. Um, you know, hopefully you're getting out earlier and all the hotels aren't already all booked and, you know, Columbia or wherever people are evacuating to. Um. But again, it really gets the people at, at the highest risk out of the way first, um. And in my opinion, more efficiently than the way they always have been doing it. So based on the new draft, again, you have all the, you know, the barrier islands would become Zone A. Um, you know, the, the Johns Island, Wadon Law. Parts of Mount Pleasant downtown, those would become B, and then, you know, essentially as you're moving further away from the coast, you're. Risk-based, um, um. Your, your level of risk under this risk-based approach would be deemed lower, and therefore you would, you know, have a. Lower priority evacuations, obviously, if there's a category four barrierland towards Charleston, they're gonna evacuate every. Um, but, you know, I think this will be important, you know, when you have those, you know, category twos. Or the ones that are coming in, you know, skirting the coast, which we've had a lot the last several years, um. So this is something that they're working on, um, they've sought feedback and participation from, uh, all the local communities. Um, like I said, I, I went up and attended that meeting, I, I thought it was a good thing for us, um. You know, the, the only question I raised is. Would we be more likely to have more frequent evacuations if you're only, you know, evacuating those barrier islands, so. Um, you know, right now, the governor may say, we're not ordering evacuation, but we recommend if you're in a. Barrier island low-lying area, you should probably leave. If you're only having those areas in an evacuation zone, would it be more likely to have higher frequency of evacuations? Um, the state EMD didn't think that would be the case, um, but, you know, at least theoretically, potentially, it could be. Um, but if there's an evacuation order, there's a reason why there's an evacuation order, it's because your, your life and your property are at risk, so. Um, this is something they're gonna be working on over the next several months, I just wanted to give you an update, uh, they were originally talking about. Changing this for this year, they've now pushed it to, um, twenty twenty-four. And they would tie it with a pretty extensive public information campaign, um, to, you know, make, make sure people are aware of what. Uh, evacuation zone they're in, so that's something we'll continue to watch and, and continue to participate in. Uh, but I did just want to give you an update of, of what came out of that meeting.
It, it seems like the evacuation zone was basically for on where in the route you were going. If you were going down toward Walco Borough. That was the whole part of where it was, and that, uh, this is. Could you extend, I, I'd like the Public Safety Committee to take a look at this next week. If you could, uh, send me the whole thing and, uh. We'll review it with them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send you the entire email that came from, uh. I can't see Joe Coats.
Thank you.
It'd be nice to know if they spend as much time figuring out what roads we use to evacuate and their improvements is. I mean, I think this is important, but there's a, our roads are such a huge problem, so. They should work on that in conjunction with this.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just feel if you're trying to get. Eighteen or twenty thousand people out on the same road network as opposed to a hundred and seventy-five thousand people out on the same network. You know, if we get that call earlier, people are gonna be leaving earlier, um, and, you know, the, the call for those inland areas may or may not ever come. But ideally, our residents who would be at the highest risk would already be done and gone before that happened, um.
Yeah, so many of them leave even before there's the actual evacuation call, everybody will get out of here early. Because, partly because of the roads and the hard task situations.
And I, I, I will say that when we had the, um, slide up with the, the population, that was based on residency data. Uh, so the point was raised in these beach communities, you know, summertime, you do have a lot of time residents, um, whether there's. You know, we don't have any hotels here, but other communities do, you have people staying in hotels and short-term rental properties. Um, those were not factored into those numbers, so they will be, you know, depending on when it happens, there could potentially be more. Uh, eighteen thousand people, but, um, tho- those were resident numbers, not necessarily. How many people may be in a evacuation zone at any given point in time. So anyway, just wanted to throw that out as, uh, information, just so it didn't hit you by surprise when that moves forward. Um. The other thing I wanted to do was just take a couple of minutes, um, if you remember last year, um. As we have done for the last several years, except the COVID year, um, council adopted, following a strategic planning. Um, workshop, a list of, um, priorities for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And I've always been of the opinion that when you have these, you shouldn't just stick them on a shelf and. Let them sit there, but it's good to kind of monitor them and, and, you know, see, are we making progress on different things? Are there items that we need to, you know, spend a little more time on, other things that we can check off our list, so. If council will indulge me, I'd just kind of like to run through each of these, you know, spend a minute or two on each one and. Kind of see where we are in terms of status, and, you know, maybe next steps for some of these items, if that's all right.
Yes, okay, proceed.
So when council adopted our list of strategic priorities, we had separated them out into a couple of different, um. Uh, priority levels, one of them was our critical priorities, the must-do items. Um, the next level we had were the significant priorities or the should-do items. Um, the moderate priorities were the could-do items. And then we also had, and we wanted to give each council member an opportunity, if there was something important with you that hadn't already been covered. Um, we called those the individual priorities and we called those the make consider, so council wasn't committing to those items, but. Um, out of respect to each council member, council said, you know, we'll look at this, we'll consider it, so. Um, we had separated those out into, um, a, a list of individual items, I'm. I'm gonna start with the highest priority ones, the must-do, and these were all done after our ranking, um, exercise that we did. Uh, at our workshop last year, so we'll just kind of go through each one and kind of briefly talk about where we stand. Um, so the first one that came up was, um, Seabrook Allen Road, addressing drainage, elevation, flooding, pavement conditions. On the town-maintained portion, um. Coordinating planned improvements with neighboring property owners and addressing drainage issues on the inbound and outbound pathways, so. We can't point to a project and say, hey, this is done, um, but it's certainly in progress, this is one that's been. Um, assigned to the Public Works Committee, um, Barry's been working a lot with that committee and also with our consultant. Um, um, trying to get plans put together, um, we will have a list of items that should be accomplished this year. Uh, along the right-of-way, you've probably already seen some enhanced landscaping and, um, we're looking at. Doing a couple other targeted improvements along there too, but this obviously is a big project, probably. Millions of dollars project, um, will take several years, um, to go through the design and permitting process, but. Um, it is ongoing, um, Barry, is there anything you'd wanna throw out in terms of? Kind of where we stand on that?
Um, well, basically, we should have a design in hand, they're, they're trying to finish it now. By spring, early summer, at which point, I think the town will just sit on it until the time is right to. Do the project, which may be after Peachy Field is done, after, um. Marina's redeveloped and then USC, I mean, as long as we keep maintaining the road, there's no. No real reason to go ahead and pave the road, uh, until we feel it's our, an opportune time for us. Uh, so it should give us another year or two to, maybe we put some money away, but the price of asphalt's gone up, so it'll give us time to. Consider when the best time to do this is, but if we have the design ready, it's more or less. A function of having to get a permit, permitting issues, which themselves could take a year or so, so at that point, you have to look a little further ahead and say, well. If you wanna do it next year, you better start permitting that, but it's gonna be ready to do, it's just a matter of what's the best opportunity for the town to do.
Can I ask just one quick question, Barry, on that, what's the terminate? You're not really repaving, but you're putting that rejuvenation stuff on. If we're waiting two or three years out, is that something that we should consider?
Um, it, it's possible, but at this point, our road's so far down, that stuff's better when there's just small cracks, I know. it, it's possible, but at this point, our roads so far down, that stuff's better when there's just small cracks. I know the P O A doesn't. And basically what it does, it kind of softens the pavement. It's cracks, we heal. Super crowded roads pretty much lived its good life and it's, it's ready to be put to bed.
So that wouldn't give us any extra time?
No.
Worth, it wouldn't be worth the cost?
No, and, and we're looking at it very short. I mean, we are going to pave the road, just whether it's one year, two years, three years.
Again, still going further than that.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, no, I mean, the roads, the roads are serviceable. There's nothing wrong with the road. It's just that, you know, it's, life is over. It needs to be resurfaced and drainage needs to be fixed the best we can. And so it's just a matter of that, the best time you can have.
That took us on a tangent. I didn't, I didn't mean to interrupt, Joe, but thank you for that.
Any other questions, comments? Right. Um, the second item we had was regarding code enforcement and the adopted goals were to enhance town's capacity, monitor and enforce violations, including beach rules, business license permitting, short-term rentals, expand our enforcement capabilities on the beach when members of beach patrol are not present, including early mornings, evenings and off-season, and provide a portal or location on the town's website where individuals may report alleged violation. Um, this is one we can pretty much check all the boxes. So, um, in the last year, we brought on, um, a full-time code enforcement officer. And we brought on a full-time, um, short-term rental compliance manager who's also, um, deputized as a code enforcement officer. Uh, we have our evening and weekend code enforcement officers who are uh, out there primarily during the peak season, uh, in evenings and on weekends when we otherwise wouldn't have our full-time staff out here working. Um, and then, uh, also adding, wasn't specifically listed under this item, but, um, adding that second vehicle, second person for beach patrol will enhance our code enforcement capabilities. And in the next few weeks, when we go live with, uh, MICA, we will have a portal, uh, code enforcement portal, uh, where people can go and report, um, um, alleged violations and have those assigned to, um, code enforcement officers. So, this is one I, I, I think we've made a lot of progress on over twelve months. Um, you know, there's things we'll continue to watch and, and tweak as we move forward, but, um, I, I feel like we can say we've pretty much checked all the, all the boxes that we had set in terms of our, our goals for that item. Any other questions or comments? Um, here none. The next one we had was the short-term rental policies. Um, complete a review of the town's existing rental policies, determine next steps, if any, regarding petition, cap short-term rental units, establish a procedure to govern how and when a referendum may be placed on the ballot. So, um, of course, in May of last year, the short-term rental advisory committee completed its, um, review of our existing policies, trends, data, statistics, um, published its reports, uh, its report, uh, as well as a list of, um, recommendations for council to consider. Um, I know that's something that's been ongoing. Um, looking at potential modifications to, uh, our ordinance. Um, we have two members of our advisory here, our ad hoc committee. Are there other items you'd want to add as far as kind of where we stand status-wise with that?
I mean, basically, I mean, we kind of checked that box, but it's, I think will always be an, an ongoing issue that we want to monitor and look at and ensure we understand what's going on in the community as far as rentals. So, I mean, we can check it, but there's still work to be done. Does that make sense?
Uh huh. Well, I think Jerry, that you're already committed to doing an update of the report. Which the, the update of the report will reflect the new data from the, the date the report was published in twenty twenty-two. So, you're continuing, we'll say you're continuing to gather and review the information that went into the report so that we will have an updated report. So it's an ongoing process.
I'm going to pass that back that we have a draft uh, to do revisions to the ordinance. It would be kind of like the summer to get under our belt of, of where we want to tweak the existing ordinance. But, I mean, that's on paper, ready to go when we think we have the information we need to present it to council, which will be before the end of the year. So, I mean, that's ongoing also.
Also, we had changes in the fee structure.
Right.
That applies to short-term rentals, which, you know, there are alternatives to just hitting it with a big sledgehammer called a cap to, let's say, give people pause before they decide that they want to jump into the short-term rental market as a property.
And we have, um, Nicole is a new compliance officer, which applies, you know, dealing with federal rentals and the whole permitting process. So I think that was progress to check off this one too. So.
Yeah, I know right offhand, three of the items we've already addressed, the recommendations that came out of the committee, having a compliance manager. We have, um, doing the, um, the local ATAX was one that came out. Um, and then also the, uh, revising the fee structure so that the funds generated from short-term rentals are set at a rate to offset the town's cost of administering and enforcing the short-term rental. So, um, we, we have made progress, but obviously we're still continuing to monitor the data and the trends. Any other questions on that one? Um, the last one we had under the must-do, um, we've already talked about it at length, and that was the, uh, garage having storage for vehicles and equipment, expanding, uh, office and storage space for town personnel, addressing drainage issues on the properties surrounding town hall. So that's really what we've been working on, um, with Barry and his committee and our, our architect for the last several months. Um, moving down to the significant priorities or the should-do items. Uh, and this, I think, is also tied to that as well. Personnel and facility needs assessment. Um, assess current future staffing needs to address council's priorities, determine long-term capital needs for additional office space, facilities, and major equipment, and evaluate options for future expansion or replacement of town hall. So, um, since October, we've added three new full-time positions, um, short-term rental, code enforcement. Uh, and I am having to report Rob and our new communication events person starts next Friday. So she's actually coming in a few days early. Um, so we've, um, you know, really beefed up our, our enforcement, um, capability, um, in line with council's priority of enhancing code enforcement, better monitoring, compliance for short-term rental properties. Uh, I know communication is always a big one. So bringing in a communication staff person, I think will be a huge help to us um, going forward. But as we know, those things all generate, um, facility needs, and that's why we've been working on the, um, town hall expansion. So, um, I don't really think we have anything to add to that other than what we've already said. But are there any questions or comments about that one? Uh, number six, uh, the pathway amenities and handsome upgrade the existing shared use pathway along the town-maintained portion of Seabrook Allen Road between Landfall Way and Fresh Fields, incorporate amenities such as benches, crosswalks, signals, lighting, signage, et cetera. So, um, all that, um, we're currently working on right now during this year's budget. Council approved, uh, two hundred thousand from state ATAX. Um, we've probably already seen several of those items going. Robert's been planting a lot of bushes and taking on a lot of the old gnarly looking stuff. We had some unsafe trees, a lot of trimming. He's put up some signage near areas where you, uh, are more likely to see standing water, um, just to alert people. Uh, some of the items we have planned for this year, uh, replacing the fence on Seabrook Allen Road, um, that's already budgeted. Um, some additional landscape enhancements, uh, we're working with, uh, Revere Group, our transportation consultant. Uh, we're looking at some additional enhancements, safety enhancements at the crosswalks, uh, including lighting, some radar signage and things like that. So we should be able to, to, um, complete all that this year. Those are not really huge projects, but I think we'll add a lot to, um, um, to that pathway. Um, Robert's been pricing out benches. We want to do some new concrete pads. We've been talking about maybe throw on a picnic table or two up along the pathway. Um, so I think probably by the end of this year, we should be able to check off all the items that we have on that. Anything you'd want to add?
Hmm, okay.
Joe, is it, is Rob going to actually build the fence?
No, we're going to put that out for bid. It's going to be over the threshold for a, a major item. So we'll have to do a full package, but he's already been working on the specs. So I just need to get that up. Um, given the cost of that and, you know, the fact that we're now approaching spring and Easter season, so I will probably be looking at doing, you know, we'll enter into a contract later this year and then probably do the project towards the end of the year, once we get past the peak season.
Um, just one thing, since, uh, the public safety committee is listed under number six, can you provide me with, you were just mentioning some of the safety enhancements, signage, uh, crosswalk monitors and so on. Could you just give me a short list of, uh, what, um, what you're considering there? And I'd like to review that with the committee next week. Uh, also, has there been any over the past year, since this has been, uh, our yearly review? Um, ongoing, uh, not, I hate to use the word importance, ongoing observations. Example, every once in a while you'll see a L S V going down the path. Um, and, what's that?
She has to find a better signal.
Oh, yeah. Um, but again, is that an aside, do, do we have any, uh, public observations in our, I know you should share that with us. Uh, but anything that you can add that, for example, is this a one-off problem or is this an ongoing problem that we really need to, um, talk about, uh, more from, again, a public safety committee? And also if it is something that's ongoing, would our code enforcement officers, example, they're going to go in and do something in the evening or whatever, they're driving out to the circle, observe what's going on on the path, turn around, come back, observe, you know, just to an extra layer of monitoring what's going on in the path. Are they able to do that? And not because it's not in, you understand what I'm saying? Because it might be on, um, you know, Seabrook Allen Road outside the gate. Um, but anyway, if it's against our code to do certain things, then maybe we can look at them to provide us a little bit of, uh, support. And all it would be is, again, just drive down to the circle, come around the circle, come back and see what you observed and going from there. Just a thought.
Yeah, they, they can certainly observe. Um, I have to get with the town attorney. I don't, because bikes, L S Vs and all that are regulated under the Uniform Traffic Code.
Right.
Um, you have to be a law enforcement officer to actually enforce it. Um, my hunch is that same thing is going to apply to the pathway. Um, but parts of it are outside of the right-of-way on Neesman. So I'm not sure if that would have any impact on whether they could or couldn't, couldn't enforce it. I have to ask legal counsel.
Yeah, certainly if they observe. Yeah. And then if they observe it and they see it quite often, then maybe we can do something. But again, just because I observe it once or twice a year, uh, doesn't make it a, a problem. But, uh, if we see it more than that once or twice a week, then it becomes more of a problem. That's all. I'm just trying to get more information from some source.
I, I've been here over five years and I know I've seen one on the pathway. I think I've only seen one pathway. I'm also not here on most nights or weekends, but, um, I, I don't think it's a very frequent occurrence. Doesn't happen. Sure happens, but, um, one of the things we also have in this year's budget is replacing the signage along the right-of-way. And that was also an item that we looked at is as you're approaching, you know, coming from the P O A right-of-way onto the town pathway, um, enhancing the signage that we have. Uh, I mean, it already says no motorized vehicles. Um, but, uh, making it a little bit more
Specific to L S V.
Yeah, that, but, um, and, and not just that too, but also like, hey, pick up after your dog if your dog has to be on a leash and, you know, those type of things too. So, um, you know, some of that we can try to do just with better signage, I think. But you're always going to have people who ignore a sign. So.
Um, again, but, uh, anything you could get me towards that? I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. All right.
Uh, all right. The next item we had was on licensing and permitting upgrades. Purchase and implement a new license and permitting software system, enable online payments, enable applicants to request and pay for licenses, permits and other services online. Um, we should just be a few weeks away from having that ready to go, um, with our new system. Uh, we actually, we, we did do online or, um, electronic payments. We started that a while back. So that was a big one we, we had. And, um, I think that alone was probably a huge part of this. I always joke, we're still on like chisel and stone when it comes to permitting. So, uh, that was really the first step was allowing, you know, credit card, debit card. You could even do the app, you know, the chip thing and all those. And, um, so we have that. And then, um, you know, our staff has been working out. We, we signed the contract with MICA and our staff has been working on, I, I think we pretty much have that to a point where we're in our testing environment. Exactly.
Here, we're currently testing it. We've been looking at it, um, for the past couple of weeks. So this is kind of like our really, really testing it. And then we'll have a meeting on Thursday going over if we have any final things and if we need to do another meeting after that.
Yeah. So there's been, uh, there's been a lot of work put into that by, um, Catherine, Nicole, Tyler, Linda, uh, Mike, um, you know, because when you're starting with something from scratch like that, there's, you know, you want things to work in a certain sequence and this has to happen before that. And, you know, so there's a lot of things that have to be set up to make it work right. So we have the framework of the system, but now they're kind of in that, you know, that testing, tweaking phase, making sure everything works the way it's supposed to. We're kind of up on a, a deadline with our business license and, um, our short-term rental permit license and all that. The renewal period is about to open up, um, probably around mid-March.
We have ours on March thirty-first.
Okay. So really in the next six weeks, you know, kind of that, that last push to get it up and operation. Um, certainly this year we'll have that online, which should be a huge benefit, not only for, uh, our ability to track and monitor and issue reports and things like that, but also just from customer service standpoint, you know, people can apply and pay and do things online without necessarily having to come here, uh, to town hall. Um, the last item in that category was the beach rules ordinance, uh, review and update the town's beach rules ordinance. Um, and that's one that Jerry and the environment wildlife committee have been working on for quite some time now. I think that was yours. You signed that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you want to give a brief update on kind of where, where we are with that?
It's just kind of a continued review discussion and then trying to talk to the very various stakeholders, um, the environment, wildlife committee is going to meet on the twenty-third and right now I think we're going to focus on the fishing part of it because that was some of the feedback we got from the article was from some of this sort of fishermen. Um, I may even invite a couple of them to come to the meeting, but that's I may even invite a couple of them to come to the meeting, but that's, we're kind of going section by section of what we want to do, where it needs revision. And I think fishing is going to be like when we tried to do the dog rules for the beach. That is gonna be one of the most controversial ones. And then right following close behind is fires on the beach and how we might want to deal with that in Sappoa. But ongoing work and obviously we can't check it off yet, but it's a much bigger project than I think I understood when I said less. When I said the beach ordinance.
But you've also spent a lot of time looking at beach ordinances from other communities.
I know my spreadsheets, yeah.
You know, talking about, you know, looking at our definitions. I mean, there's been a lot of work. You haven't seen the ordinance yet, but there's a lot of work in the background.
And we've had Zoom meetings with presentations like with our, what's the coastal science official name? They gave us a presentation.
Coastal Science and Engineering.
So we've kind of spent that time, a lot of research and as Joe said, I read all the beach ordinances up and down and made these big spreadsheets so we can kind of see where we are, look what Kiowa does in the language. And, you know, one of the biggest challenges is how we want to define the beach. That's kind of the biggest. Once we get past that, some of the things to do and not do on the beach become easier to put in the ordinance. Anyway, we can't check it off, but we can check that it's ongoing. Lots of work being put into it.
But we should have an ordinance this year.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, if there are any questions about that, we'll move on to the moderate priorities that could do items. First one we had, number nine, communication enhancement. Continue to diversify and enhance the town's communication capabilities. Consider distributing public information via regular e-blasts and improve coordination with public safety agencies. I know a lot of this will be addressed when we bring Rob in on the, that's basically gonna be the basis of her position. So and she comes with a lot of experience with different, working with different communication channels. So that's something we're gonna continue to work on over this year, once we kind of get her, you know, acclimated and set up. You know, we have a lot of different ideas of things that we'd like to do once she's fully on board. So I expect we'll continue to see some additional enhancements as we go forward through throughout the year. Just a few of the items we've kind of prioritized for her. She's not even here yet. We're already putting her to-do list together would be redoing the maller that we send out, the floodplain booklet. We had a good meeting yesterday with one of our regimes and seeing a need of having a I know something like this is already out there, who to call, but you know, if there is a violation or you know, you see something and you want to report it to somebody, who do you call? So that's something we'll ask her to, you know, get together and with some of the different agencies, the club and the POA, you know, coming up with a little cheat sheet, you know, if you see somebody trespassing on the club, you call. You know, you see a dog doing what dogs do in your front yard. You know, those type of things. So I don't know that anything like that, that level of specificity is. So I think that's something that could be a benefit for residents and a lot of the regimes.
I was just gonna say, maybe she will have like a thing outside the box idea from my one contact number of how we could do that.
Maybe.
Maybe.
I'm just saying that most of the attempts at that have been, what is each group in charge of? In other words, not so much of if you see an infraction or whatever, but Sappoa is in charge of this. The town is in charge of this. The club is in charge of this. We've had that for a while and it's, so, you know, I would maybe start on that and then fill in the blanks of of types of infractions or whatever.
Well, I think this all came out of our meeting yesterday was that parking on the street, you know, we know that the streets belong to Sappoa. But they didn't seem to understand that. Who do you call if someone is parked on the street after eleven o'clock at night or whatever? They just didn't. And these were people who've been here for a long time. So we're thinking of really like a who do you call, not who does what. But truly.
No, I understand.
Totally. Get down to, you know, there's there's somebody playing with an alligator out on the golf course or pond that we know have alligators. Who do we call? You know, so it's a different, it's a different nuance, I guess.
No, that's what I'm saying, the way it's been and then just add to that.
Yeah, take what we have and then just. Some personally there. Yeah. It's just not, we need to, make it more. So people know who to call when they have a problem.
I know on the improving communication with public safety agencies, Dan has spent quite a bit of time on that. Anything you want to report or update?
Well, we're at our DRC meeting. Got quite a few different agencies represented, so I think it'll be a good way to hear where everybody is. So before we get too much into this storm season.
Yeah, it seems like we've had better engagement in the last year or two and, you know, having them come and participate and, and, you know, being actively engaged proactively instead of just responding to whatever issues come up.
Yeah, so. But anyway, I think everybody is willing to participate and so I think it'll be a good. While we're talking about that, I have a note to question the mayor on something presented before our DRC meeting. So I'm gonna put it on the spot. Now, has there been any resolution of the storm debris site? Of where are we with regards to that? I always just wanted to update the DRC on the next month of March as to where we are. I know you were having consultation with DEHAC and Kiowa. In other words, where do we get rid of our storm debris? We have the pasture here. Remember? And then there is the one across the street from Fresh Fields that is no longer available.
We, we used to have a lease or property behind Fresh Fields and that we no longer have that.
That's correct.
So the only site that as I recall, the only site we're left with is the pasture.
Okay.
We did not identify or enter a new lease as far as I can recall.
Okay. The reason why I'm saying is, one of the people I'm going to be in contact with is Tetra Tech. And a big part of them is debris hauling and in storm-related situations. And they take care of a lot of that. But they gotta know how to place to go. So in other words, I know the county is working on space outs, I mean, it's a long haul from here. It's out past Savannah Highway and so on, things out in Hollywood and I'm just saying, you know, again, better now than later. Just wanted to see where we are with this. And then if there's certain things I need to do to upgrade that and possibly look at something.
Well, I know that Kiowa had arrangements for a site on the other side of Kiowa Parkway.
Yeah.
And I was over there, but I didn't. My recollection is that we did not enter a lease of it.
And I heard DEHAC had a problem with that. I think that was one of your last reports.
Was concerned about the space available being used for the two towns and it would require having an arrangement between two towns as to who is primarily responsible. I'd have to go back and look at my files. To tell you the truth, I don't remember what the final outcome was.
Well, I do remember your excellent report on this and updates.
I did go back and see what my dad.
Thank you. I'm just trying to see if there's anything we can do on the twenty-first of March to move this along and maybe there's something, that's all. I know you take hope.
Any other questions, comments on that? Next we had number ten, the green belt projects, identifying and recommending projects for funding from the county green belt program. This one was assigned to Environment, Wildlife. And I guess we also had an advisory green belt committee. I know Jerry, you've been working on that.
Yeah, I mean, that over the past year, I mean, that committee's met a handful of times in contact with Eric Davis, who coordinates the program for the county. I would say that the committee's kind of on hold right now to see what happens with Bo Hickett and USC. What might we be able to do with that money behind Town Hall? With the nature trail or path around the pond or like whatever. So that money does not disappear. It's there for us. We just have to come up with a project that would meet the criteria for the funding. So it's certainly a priority that's on hold as we kind of see what develops to do something outside the gate.
But you have looked at and identified some.
Yeah.
Potential.
Looked at several things like taking the pathway across, which we would need an easement from Mike Schuler in USC and maybe crab docks over there. Right now, it seems like the advisory committee's really been on water activities. But there's a possibility over there and I really think there's a good possibility behind Town Hall, what we could could, could develop back there as far as a good public space that would meet the criteria. So it's kind of one of those things that's wait and see. I hope we don't wait too long, but the money's there. It doesn't disappear. And my every intention of that committee is not to leave that money on the table at any point in time and to get it out here at our end of the hour.
Okay, thank you. The next item we had was on building permitting and inspections. Consider options for the provision of permitting and inspection services in the town, including remaining with the county as we currently do, contract basis, potentially contract instead with the town of Kiowa Island. Bring permitting inspection services in-house with town personnel or bring permitting inspection services in-house with contracted personnel. We haven't spent very much time on this one. But that's something we'll be looking at, probably before we get into next year's budget process. I think it's just something good to look at. I know it's been a few years since we last looked at it. Obviously, I think from a financial standpoint, we could absorb it, but then we'd be taking out a lot of additional things, particularly from floodplain side that the county's been doing on our behalf. So I think it's good procedurally just to go back and look at it. Is there a need for it? Is there a benefit of doing it? What sort of costs would we be taking on? So that's something that we'll continue to look at over the summer and into the fall prior to the budget season. Alternate revenue sources, evaluate and consider the imposition of alternate revenue sources to meet ongoing operational capital needs, including a local accommodations tax of up to one percent, which was adopted last fall, went into effect January first, and a local hospitality tax of up to two percent on the sale of prepared meals and beverages. That's one we don't currently have. It was on the list. I don't know if anybody wanted to take that and move it forward, but Kiowa does have a one percent hospitality tax. We, of course, do not, but you can do up to two percent. We have also, this was our, I think, second year of a multi-year phased-in approach for our license, business license rates. We were trying to get us kind of more in line with the regional average. So it's a three-year phase-in process. This is year two. We'll have one more to go. And then we've also adjusted the short-term rental permit fees. Wasn't listed explicitly on here, but coming out of the committee's recommendations as part of last year's budget process, we did review all those and try to fortune out, you know, what percentage of different personnel and equipment and software and whatnot. And then set our fee accordingly to offset that. So we've made progress. We haven't done everything on this list, but we have made progress several of our, particularly on the fee side, but also the local accommodations tax as well. The last group we had, these were the individual priorities. These were ones that were raised by an individual member of council. These ones didn't necessarily have any commitment of council to actually adopt them or move forward with them, but just to say, you know, we'll, we'll look at it, we'll consider it. The first one we had was the plan updates, develop a schedule and review process for updates to the town's beach management plan and comprehensive plan. Those will actually have to be updated next year, 2024. So as we get into this year's budget process, we'll make sure that we're budgeting the comp plan. Last time we did it with the county and they didn't charge us, but at last check, I don't think anyone who worked on it last time still works at the county. So we'll have to get with them to see if that's still an option. But comp plan is just a five-year update. Last one was the full ten-year rewrite, so this one's not gonna be as big of an undertaking as the last one, but it is still something that we're required to do by law and about prior to the end of 2024. And the beach management plan, that's one that we do contract out with Coastal Science and Engineering. That's something we would plan to budget for at the end of this year, so we can undertake that. We have to do that on a five-year schedule as well. Wasn't listed on here, but is included as a budget option or a budget item for this year's budget to initiate a marshfront management plan. So that's something that we would add to this list as well. The next one we had was a kind of tied to what I just said, marsh creek and wetlands policy. Consider adopting a policy to protect salt marshes, tidal creeks and wetlands within the town. A lot of that was actually implemented with adoption of the new DSO. We enhanced some of the buffer requirements and tree preservation requirements, particularly in areas around marshes and wetlands and water bodies. But I think this will also tie to what we just talked about, the marshfront management plan. It could be an independent evaluation of what existing policies we have in place, what are some best practices that other communities are looking at? To try to preserve and protect those critical water habitat areas.
Like you said, Joey, put money for consulting in the budget plus we have the briefing from the following beaches consultant. So I think we may have stepped forward on this of
Yeah.
kind of educating ourselves of how to go back to it.
And that's something, I mean, we're not gonna probably, even if we start it tomorrow, I don't think that someone's gonna be finished next year. But I definitely see us making progress over the rest of this year. You know, assuming we have some sort of plan or list of recommendations that come out of that. You know, that's something that probably the next council will be looking at when we have our twenty twenty-four, twenty-five strategic planning session. But it is, it's budgeted and in process as well. Pat, I think the next one was yours, evaluate the three forms of municipal government and consider changing from the current mayor council to the council form or the council manager form. Of course, that's something that would have to go to a referendum. I don't know if you've given that any more thought or had any update or anything on that one.
Well, I think about it a lot. I do think. And I think before we, to begin this, I need to really talk to MFC and probably get a contact from. probably get a contact from you on who to talk to. Hopefully have them come and do the presentation to council so that we can truly understand the process of doing this and the benefits of doing it, if there are any benefits, and if there aren't, then we can just push it away. But, you know, I think to bring in someone who has worked with other towns and get some feedback, so that would be my, my plan was to let you get settled into this year and then I was going to get that name from you and move ahead. So.
Ashley Tiller, she's our regional services representative.
Okay, you can email me that, yeah. And I'll contact her and, so it would be to me, you know, so that we all understand this before we even put it out in front, you know, the community, what we're, what we might want to do. And maybe we don't want to do it at all, you know, it's just a concept.
All right, and then the last item we had on the list, I think this was a DAN item. Work with the Green Space Conservancy to identify and preserve conservation areas. Of course, that's something we kind of do on an ongoing basis with, in our zoning ordinance when they acquire property, we will kind of put that added layer of protection on top of it with the conservation. I mean, I think we actually have one pending right now, didn't they go to planning commission?
It's coming to council this week.
So we have our, our first one under the new D S O for conservation rezoning. Are there any other updates or?
No, yes, we've expanded this a little bit to have conversations with the Kewa Conservancy because we were looking at also, they are interested in conserving areas between here and Fresh Fields against Kaseek and so on. So I try to maintain the communication with them to see, you know, are there other areas in our general area that wouldn't work into the conservation area. So anyway, that's.
All right, thank you. Probably two other items I would add to that. One of them is, I think it was Jerry who recommended this in the budget. This was the first year we did establish a conservation fund to have, you know, some money set aside when we have surpluses, if we use it towards matching funds or something for conservation purposes. It wasn't anything that we had listed in, in this plan, but I think is, is tied to that one and probably to be to the green bill as well. I think we put in fifty thousand. And then in the new D S O, we do have a tree removal permit, which would come with a fee. And that fee, any revenue we receive for that would also go into that fund as well. And then I don't think it was addressed any of these other ones, but the community promotion grant program we have obviously is available to Green Space, I think they've gotten a grant in the past for the sign. So, you know, that's a, not a huge pool of money, but something available to, you know, help them promote their cause of securing green space for the community as well. So I think we could easily consider both of those as contributing towards that goal as well. So anyway, the reason why I want to do this, just to make sure, you know, Ron, we're kind of keeping this in the back of our head. You know, we're not just going willy nilly. I know a lot of times when you have a big item or a big issue, it's very easy to get tunnel vision and, you know, lose focus. So that's why I always, you know, I think it adds a lot of value to have a list of strategic priorities like that. You know, obviously we haven't finished everything on the list, but I don't know, I could say, you know, we've, we've at least done something with everything on that list or, you know, we're moving toward some resolution with everything on that list, so. I'm happy with the progress we've made. I mean, we still, it's only one year ago we adopted. I feel like we've done a lot in last year, you know, we still have more work to do and, you know, more issues will, unexpected issues will continue to come up over the course of this year, but I just felt like it would be beneficial just to take a little bit of time to kind of review those, see where we were and, and, you know, what work we have left to do. If there aren't any other questions, that completes that.
Any other items, Derek?
Nope.
There we go. Anyone, any other items for discussion, comment, questions? You're in none. Who will happily entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So great.
Is there a second?
Second.
All unfair adjourning the February twenty twenty three Town of Seadruck Island Work Session. Please signify your approval by saying a.